Um, okay, uh, so this just shows our, um, summary of our budget, how much we've expended so far, for this fiscal year from October to current, twenty-eight percent. Our operations summary for a number of clinic visits, we did have a significant decrease in December, most of which we attributed to the storm and to the, uh, cold weather during that time. Our PRC, uh, we've been paying for priority one visits and some level two visits. Um, again, our average weekly spending is, uh, around three hundred thousand, a little bit above that. Um, but we've been paying close attention to that because we are limited in the amount of, uh, PRC money, and that's a, been an ongoing issue. Um, so we definitely get a lot of questions and concerns about that. Um, but that's what our current level of weekly spending is. Um, status of third-party collections, um, the team is doing a great job of continuing to work on collecting all revenue we can through Medicaid, Medicare, private insurance, and through the VA. For the most part, it's been meeting our goals, and we had just recently increased our goals for third-party collections. And, uh, we anticipate, um, with the next year, uh, with the South Dakota Medicaid expansion, that that will increase, but, so we won't see that, uh, revenue increase until two thousand twenty-four.
Dr. Jumping, I have a question about that. I know Medicaid expansion's gonna, um, happen, I believe, in June or so. Are we gonna do anything where we, uh, I know there are, I think they're called navigators, where we set up and have people sign up for Medicaid?
Yes, our, uh, patient benefits coordinators and our business office staff has gone through some additional training. Actually, they collaborated with the Great Plains Travel Termins Health Board with some additional training, and they're gonna be doing some outreach efforts, um, to reach out to community members, uh, to, uh, work on extra efforts to, um, get people, try to reach out to get people signed up for Medicaid who are eligible. Right now, we, we do that, we make phone calls, send out letters for when we do see, um, people come through who may be eligible for Medicaid, Medicare, um, and, and also, um, those who are working on applying for other types of assistance like SSI or disability, we put them in touch with our social services staff to see if they can assist as well. Um, but, but yes, with the Medicaid expansion, we're gonna, um, be working on some additional efforts as well.
Thank you.
Um, we are continuing to have, uh, ongoing issues with, um, the vacancy rates. You can see have continued to increase, um, which is right now at the forty-one percent mark. And as we had discussed previously, depending on the department, um, some of those are higher, um, in some of the departments as well, and other departments are, are lower. So it can, it just depends on, um, you know, the different outpatient, um, departments where we feel it a little bit more, um, especially in, uh, you know, nursing lab or, or radiology. We're working with, uh, HR to really focus on those, make sure that we have area-wide announcements, um, and make sure that those advertisements are, are active, um, in those departments, and that we're responding in a timely manner to any applicants that we get. Um, this is our most recent report that we had run for our active user population, and it lists per, uh, Pine Ridge, Kyle, Wombley, LaCreek. This is if, uh, anyone's had a visit within the past three years, if they live within the service unit, um, area, and if they're Native American. It's around twenty-five thousand, uh, people. We did just have our, uh, governing body meeting, but unfortunately, it was at the same time during, um, your OST, uh, leadership orientation. So we'll have another governing body meeting, uh, in about three months, so we'll send a updated invite for that. One, uh, big accomplishment right now is that we do have our surgery positions that are just recently advertised, and we're reviewing applicants for those positions. Um, so we're excited about that because we definitely wanna get off of our, um, operating room diversion that we're currently on. Um, and we've, I've already, um, we'll get some new updates for positions. Uh, we'll be having a start date for midwife, for Wombley, and for Kyle. Um, so we'll get you updates on those as soon as we get those start dates. Um, we have a new infection prevention nurse that started just in January, a new ambulance secretary. Um, we've had some, uh, new, uh, COVID, uh, labor pool staff that have started, um, so they're assisting in multiple departments. The orthopedic specialty clinic has been quite busy, they're here, um, several days a month. Radiology clinic has been keeping busy. We also have a pulmonary function testing clinic and a respiratory therapist, uh, that's been busy, uh, assisting with that clinic, but also, uh, just with consults in general. We have, uh, recently made a selection for a third dentist, um, so we'll be getting a start date for a, a third dentist as well. And then we're working on efforts to, um, the, the mobile unit clinic, we're gonna be sending out the calendar for that, but we're also working on efforts to reopen the Manderson Clinic and, and get a schedule out for that. At least one day a week is what we're anticipating, um. So we'll send out a, a public service announcement about that. Ongoing challenges, um, we have a significant projected budget deficit. Um, we're working with our finance department and all of our departments to look at ways that we can increase our, um, revenue generation, looking at ways of increasing clinical productivity and outreach, um, and then also ways that we can reduce our, um, our costs in general. How can we, uh, reduce, we've had, you know, in the past couple of years, gradually increasing, uh, contract costs, that, you know, hospitals across the nation have experienced in the midst of COVID, um, and we're no, no different. So we're looking at, um, how we can, uh, continue to look at, uh, retentions, recruitment for federal staff, um, how we can be creative and, um, making sure that we're, again, looking at recruitment and with federal staffing, which would then continue to keep our contract costs lower. And really looking at, uh, the equipment needs, making sure, uh, that those needs are items that are, are definitely needed and not want, um, fine-tuning, uh, budgets with each department, making sure that this is consistent with our, our current, the, the fact that we are in a deficit right now. So we're reviewing all of our budgets again with, with the department and keeping that in mind. Um, we're continuing to have challenges with the HR process, and we voiced this with our, um, chain of command, um, and we've had to update our advertisements, um, we've had some interested applicants, um, but had to voice that those physicians had not been advertised, um, but, but did just recently get the surgery position advertised. We've had some challenges with contracting, um, and that is a, a, quite a slow process. And so we're following up on especially our high-priority contracts, uh, such as ambulance, uh, inpatient nursing, um, the emergency department. And this was sent out to all of you, so you can, um, let me know if you have any other additions. Uh, we're following up on our retention plan with nursing departments and, um, you know, assisting the nursing supervisors with, uh, writing those retentions and recruitment, um, to help the team keep up with. We're also reaching out to different associations to get our advertisements out there. For example, with the Optometry Society, uh, reaching out to different universities to get our advertisements for, um, dental, uh, midwife, OB-GYN, um, just to reach out beyond IHS, uh, to look for, uh, more medical and nursing recruitments. We're also, um, have some collaborative agreements in the works to get more of our, um, recruitment pipelines with, um, professional students and trainees that may want to stay on and work here as well. We do have, uh, many performance improvement projects going on, and right now, one of our big projects we're looking at is our clinic scheduling, um, ways that, you know, if we do have patients who know show, how can we get other patients in who are walking in or wanna be seen on the same day? Um, how can we be more flexible with patients and assist, assist them getting into clinic in a timely manner? So that's one of our, uh, big projects. Um, we're also reviewing in our performance evaluation plans, um, the expectations of, um, increased productivity as well. The pharmacy's been collaborating with our, uh, first responders to make meloxone, uh, readily available, um, and they're working on some additional collaborative agreements with, um, I believe it's the housing, um, as well, so that we can be able to offer, um, additional meloxone training to other OST programs. And we're continuing to reach out and offer, um,
Who's listening and understanding what is being said here?
Dr. Jumping, you're, um, uh, are you on the phone?
Yes.
Okay, might need to put it closer, but I do believe, uh, Councilwoman Tapio has a question. Oh, are you done with your report, Councilman? Or, I mean, done with your report, Dr. Jumping?
Sure. Was there a question? I didn't, I didn't, um...
They were waiting for you, um, to end your report, but it was getting harder to hear you.
Okay. Are there questions?
I believe she's done, Councilwoman Tapio.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Um, good afternoon, Dr. Jumping Eagle.
Good afternoon.
Okay, so, I was looking at your report on, I don't have the written second part of it, I have all the facts and figures, and you know, everything you're saying sounds good, but in reality, um, I've been up to the hospital almost every day. In fact, I came to your office several times last week, and I learned that you were on leave. So, um, what I wanna say is, and I'm gonna try to be as tactful as I possibly can, but, you know, everything you're saying today sounds good, but in reality, um, IHS has fallen apart. And I wanna tell you today that you have the most unhappiest staff that I have ever seen. And I get phone calls from the nurses, different departments every day, um, pleading with me to address things going on at IHS. And so what I was gonna say to you when I sat down and, and in our conversation I wanted to have with you was I was gonna tell you that, you know, we have a couple other, um, programs out there that are struggling, and everybody wants to blame everything on COVID and everything, but you don't, we don't even have a staff at IHS. I asked you to tell us how many board-certified doctors we had, I never got, I never got an answer to that. Um, the other thing is, um, so, you know, you, you make it sound like everything is okay, but in reality, it's not. Again, I'm gonna say, IHS, the place has fallen apart up there. And my recommendation is that you get into those departments, roll up your sleeves, get into those departments, and start talking to your employees. Start talking to your employees, you know? And you need to have a meeting with all your staff at IHS and tell them, tell them what's going on. I mean, they see it, but if they hear you vocalize it, then maybe things will start changing. And, you know, I told one director, you need to tell your employees, all hands on deck, all hands on deck. We have a crisis here. Our, our operation, our ship is sinking, and I need your help, I need your cooperation, I need your ideas, you need to listen to your employees. Because I, for one, am fed up of getting, um, getting calls from your employees, from the nurses that are overworked and understaffed, and, and it's just, it's chaos up there, you know? And, and I respect that, you know, you're our tribal member and your qualifications, all that, I, I highly respect that. But my recommendation to you is to, again, roll up your sleeves and go talk to your staff, because just maybe somebody in one of those departments has some answers to everything going on, you know? Because we are in a crisis mode, no, the nurses are all ready to walk out, um, they're not being heard. I've heard nurse after nurse say that they have written complaints, and I know IHS is a government-run facility, so you run into that, um, what is it now, the union, yeah. When you have a union like you do in the government, nothing ever gets done, nothing ever gets done, and, and all the complaints never get heard, it just gets pushed under the rug, and it's business as usual. But I'll tell you what, right now, it saddens me that our healthcare has reached the level it has, because it's deplorable, it really is. And you know, I'm, I'm for one, I want to be part of the solution there, but if you're not being honest with us and giving us a true bird's-eye view of what's really going on there, then we can't help. And the sad thing is, is that that is our hospital, that is our service unit, and right now, things are not good. So that's my recommendation, is to talk to your staff, have a staff meeting, and find out what they're thinking, what's going on, you know? And the same way, you know, I'm concerned about the ambulance service too, what's going on there? If we only have three ambulance service reservation-wide, that's a catastrophe, you know? And these are things that we could be addressing in Washington DC, which we're going to this week, if we knew and had a clear picture of what's really going on and what we need to do. We could help you, if it's funding, if it's whatever, you know? But again, I'm just gonna leave it at that and say that, you know, I wanna be part of the solution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Tapia.
Excuse me, Miss Tapia. Um, this is, this is Dr. Jumping Eagle. So I, I don't think that, um, me saying that we have a projected deficit, that we have a forty-one percent vacancy rate, that we have challenges with HR, that we have challenges, you know, that, that, that's me saying that everything's okay. I've expressed for several months the challenges that the service unit is facing. Um, I've attended meetings where I've expressed the concerns and the challenges of the service unit. While we have a great team, a hard-working staff, um, the fact that we are on OR diversion, OB-GYN diversion every two weeks, I, I lay out the facts of the challenges that the service unit is going through. And, and, and those are the facts of the matter, of, of the things that we're dealing with. The, the staffing challenges, the high cost of the contract, um, and the, the fact that we continue to provide care in the midst of all of these challenges, that our staff is dependable, reliable, despite all of these challenges, despite winter blizzards. And, you know, the ambulance, um, level of care right now is, um, is similar to prior to, um, to us reassuming the program. So to be described as catastrophic, I think, is a bit dramatic, but, um, I, I guess I would disagree at that point. Are, are there challenges? Could it be better? Yes, and we're always working to improve. Um, so I, I would say that I am expressing, um, what are things that, um, that we face all the time, and that, that we're continuing to do the best we can with what we have. Um, and we have great, a great staff, um, and I do listen every day to, um, what potential su- solutions are. That, that's how we've been able to make improvements in the last several years. So, but, but I appreciate that, um, feedback, and I'll, I'll continue to take that into account and, and work to do better. Thank you, Miss Tapia.
Yes, Councilman?
Uh, yes. Ms. Jumping Eagle, let's forget that you're a tribal member and think of you as the administrator of a treaty obligation of health to every tribal member. You are not administering good treaty health to the Ogallala's. Now, if you don't work with us, we are gonna go to Aberdeen and to Washington to get a person who can administer health. You've gotta work with your staff. This is very important to the tribal council here, because our tribal members tell us of the healthcare they're getting or not getting. We see it ourselves when they're sent home with pain pills, at the last minute, diagnosed with cancer and die. This is a reality that we see, we work with, we live with, and you are the person, the treaty health, federal government persons that we have to deal with it. So we ask you to get on the ball right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments for Dr. Tapia? Yeah, Councilman Watkins?
You know, John, John and Robert are telling the truth, you know, we're getting these emails and all that, and, you know, you've gotta quit bullshitting us, uh, just flat here. You know, they're shorthanded on ambulances, that's for one thing. And health-wise, you know, people don't wanna go there anymore, they're afraid, and it shouldn't be that way. And if, uh, you know, if the employees ain't getting any help, then you know there's something wrong. So, you know, with that, my motion is not to accept a report.
So we got a motion to deny the report?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Tapio. Any questions or comments? Councilman Little Dog?
You know, when we deny these reports, do they go anywhere, or did, is it just on record? I think, um, you know, maybe states, you could start sending them to the area that, you know, when we decline, or we, we don't approve these reports, that they go to the area, because to me, it's like, don't even make sense to even vote to approve or disapprove if, if it's not going to affect anything, you know? So I'd like to see these, uh, these actions go somewhere.
Councilwoman Tapio?
Um, in regards to what Mr. Little Dog just stated, Councilman Little Dog, um, it's my hope that, you know, when we don't approve these reports, it's a reflection, like Mr. Steele said, on the, um, the CEO. And if there's enough, not enough, um, support for that CEO, then maybe we need to advertise, you know? Maybe we need to do that. When I remember the last twelve terms, ten years, how many times did we have overturned our CEO? But we had a, we had a say in our healthcare, and now this has been going on for three years now, and now we've hit bottom, and so maybe it's time, you know? So it's my hope that when... Wait, now, I'm not, I still got the floor.
Okay, apologies.
It's my hope that when we do not re, um, approve these reports, after so many reports not approved, that Aberdeen area will take a look at what we're not approving, and maybe we need to make change. Thank you.
Councilwoman Whitehorse?
Thank you. Um, Sarah, were you going to respond?
I would like to.
Okay, I, I'll go after Sarah.
This, this is Dr. Jumping Eagle. You know, I've, I've, um, I, I don't understand how this council can say that this service unit is at the, you know, the statement that you're making that we're at the bottom. When I got here in two thousand eighteen, and this service unit was, was lost their CMS accreditation and was not able to bill, and was already in the same, uh, financial situation that we're in right now, I, I mean, things have only gotten better since then. And if there are, um, I mean, yes, we, we deal with issues every day that we follow up with in a timely manner, that we follow up with complaints. I, I'm available, you know, almost twenty-four-seven. Um, if I, I rarely ever take leave, and the fact that you're making a statement that I was on leave, I mean, I, I, I don't even know what to say to that, but, and, and the staff here can speak to that. So I've invested, you know, my expertise and time, because I care about the fact that our community has a hospital. And, and... So, so I think to make these broad, general statements about a service unit that has survived all of these challenges, and I'm clearly speaking to you about the challenges that we're continuing to face. And as the CEO of this service unit, i- in communicating to the council and the leadership of the Ogallala Lakota Nation, the things that are needed to advocate for the health of the nation and the service unit, the CEO is not responsible for how much funding comes from IHS to the service unit, or how much money IHS determines to give to PRC for the entire Lakota Nation. So I'm responsible for making sure that we manage it the best that we can, and that we respond and that we implement corrective actions. And we have a, a great business office team that is trying to bring in as much revenue as we can to make up the difference for what IHS has not funded. So that's, that's like a never-ending thing that we're doing. We reassumed emergently the ambulance program. It's not a situation that we wanted to be in, but we did it overnight, and so that, in a place where it's functional. And my expectation of our team is that we're here for the people twenty-four-seven, no matter what and no matter weather, so that if people come here, the people have what they need. Now, if there are quality of care issues, then we will continue to work to address those. We'll hold people accountable. And we've had to implement a change in the culture that people are here to, to bring the same standard of care that anybody would expect. And I will, I will continue to expect that. I come here for my care, my kids come here for my care, and I would bring any one of my kids to any place in this hospital for care. That's how much that I respect the staff here. But so if there are issues, then I will follow up with them in a timely manner. I, I would, and, and I'll continue to hold people accountable, whether they're a federal staff member, whether, whether they're a contractor. So, so making broad-sweeping statements about the whole service unit, when you're discounting our staff members who work hard here every day. So, so those types of comments are just really... So so those types of comments are just really not appreciated and it doesn't, it's not respectful of all of the hard work that we've done for many years and the changes that have occurred since two thousand fifteen and since two thousand eighteen. So please give us, you know, that respect of of what's occurred since then and the fact that we're not in that situation. And and yes, we we do always can always improve.
Thank you, Dr. Jopinigo. We have Councilwoman Whitehorse.
Um, thank you. I I appreciate your the statement you just made, Sarah. A- and I appreciate the fact that when someone calls me with an issue, I can call you directly and I can get an answer. Um, I I guess I I still have issues though. Um, the first one, i- is there a plan on um keeping the nurses that we have and recruiting more? Do you have a plan for that?
Yes, I we're reaching out to our staff, we're writing retentions. I've I've sat here till ten o'clock at night and reached out to staff and written retentions and submitted them to area. I'm working with our supervisors to respond to any nursing applications that come in to um snatch them up as fast as possible. To our um director of nursing is working with the colleges to get students in here because that is a great way of getting more applicants into our uh nursing departments. And that's something that, you know, I'm not clear on why that was, you know, slowing down, but it's a way that um we had been working with OLC and other nursing schools before. Um, but we're getting that going again. Um, you know, the uh also reaching out to other places like Western Dakota Tech and um other schools so that we can get more um recruitment in. And we're looking at that for other departments too, similar to the ambulance program um and the dental schools. So that's something that we want to expand upon.
So um, how many ambulances are active at any time during the reservation?
Three.
Anytime on three?
Yeah.
And how many ambulances does IHS have right now? Just three?
No, there's eight.
So what is it that you need, staff?
Yeah. We have uh, believe it's twelve federal staff and then we have additional contractors.
So is there a plan on recruiting people to 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 utilize those ambulances?
Yes, we're um, we're out, we're hiring the positions, I mean, we've had positions pending with classification, we've changed some to part-time to see if we could recruit more. We were hearing that some people would be more interested in part-time positions, so we changed some to part-time. Some of those advertisements just came out again. Um, we're uh, so we just hired an uh, I think two more additional EMTs. Um, so we should be getting start dates on one of those. Uh, there's there's definitely positions out there that are open.
Okay.
And for paramedics as well. And then we're reaching out to a um ambulance paramedic school to see if we could get students here because that would be another uh recruitment pipeline as well.
So I don't understand how there's a shortage of EMTs and um ambulance drivers because we had a staff of over sixty when the, when it was under the tribe. So I don't understand why there's a shortage there. But, excuse me.
I I don't remember there being a staff of sixty, but I could be wrong, but um our uh, I mean, we're limited by um and not only ambulances, but we're also limited by financial constraints.
Yeah, I did the time sheets for, I did the time sheets for ambulance service and we had over sixty EMTs, ambulance drivers and paramedics. So there was sixty. Um, I know this morning there was an issue at Wembley Clinic and I don't know um if there's um, some they don't take emergent care. But um, there was a lady who fell down and she was, her husband was trying to take her to the clinic. And they told her, they told him that she would have to come in um sign up and wait around. And she's um, she's um she's already under um care for a prior illness. And um, this is the third time she's tried to go to Wam- Wembley Clinic and been told that in the, in an emergency situation and been told that she um wouldn't be seen unless there was time. I I think there needs to I don't know, I know they're not in the emergency room, but I also know there should be priority for care.
Right. I I mean, I would say, I mean, you know, it it's tough because it's one of these they said things, but um in general, if somebody needs care, that I would just go there. And then, you know, the the med- the team is gonna figure it out. They're they're trained to take care of the patient.
Yeah.
And whatever we need to do, we take care of the patient. So I don't know what, you know, it's similar to other conversations we've had where in the translation, you know, between two to three different people, it's hard for me to know what was said to the patient.
Yeah, and it just so happened that the CHR was there. So the CHR took that that person to the emergency room in Martin, so she's over here now. But I I know that happens more than it should and not just in Wembley Clinic. Um, I I think that there needs, I don't there needs to be some type of um case management, I guess, with chronic patients who have who have um chronic illnesses that need special care and attention. And and I I I wouldn't know where that would come from if we would do that from CHR or if IHS has the capabilities to follow those patients, to follow their progress. Because um, some of them give up on IHS and IHS is our only healthcare on the reservation. You know, and whenever their appointments are canceled or whatever or a doctor is is um, is not as nice as they should be because that's been a complaint as well, then they get lost in the cracks. And that's when what John mentioned happens, you know? If if someone is not receiving the care that they should in a way that they should, then they won't come back to the clinic. And um, by the time they come back to the clinic, it's too late to do anything.
Right, right.
There has to be some way to deal with our our patients who need the care rather than just scaring them away. Because there are so many people.
Yeah, tho- I mean, the only way honestly for us to be able to make changes with that and give feedback if people um aren't doing the right things is for us to at least get a phone call so that we can follow up on those things. And so it but but I hear what you're saying about, you know, some some people would rather not even have that conversation, you know, like not everybody um, some people have a hard time speaking up for themselves.
Right.
But if, but if we don't um, you know, but if but if we don't hear about some of those things, then you know, as the supervisor, I can't follow up on if something was um, if somebody wasn't treated right or maybe, you know, followed, something wasn't followed up on, like the the only ways that we can continue to make the positive changes is if if the supervisors, you know, like either Deputy CEO Dwan Kendrick needs to hear about those things because she's over Wembley and and Kyle. Um, or the patient advocates or even if they tell, you know, like tell you about it and you tell us or something like that, then um, we can follow up on it, but um you know, there's there's things that when I walked in the door in two thousand eighteen, I I I don't know why people were putting up with certain things or if they went on ears that didn't hear it, but um but we have made a lot of positive changes and 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 that's our goal is to continue to do that. Um and so my, it, you know, just please continue to reach out to us and let us know if if things aren't going the right way or somebody needs additional help. We do have case managers at each clinic. Um, and so we do want their role to continue to expand. Um, if we have patients, you know, even from the ER that we think need follow-up care, we're having the case managers reach out to them and um set up appointments with their primary care providers. We do the same thing if we see like in contract health, they were sent somewhere or discharged, we try to coordinate their care to get them a follow-up appointment. Those are some of the things that we're uh, working on doing.
So there are case managers?
Yes.
Um, maybe you could make those numbers public for the, for each clinic?
Okay.
Sometime in the near future. Because um people need, need need healthcare and um they're afraid to go back because of the way they've been treated in the past or the way they're being currently treated. And they need someplace to be able to go. And if if a patient advocate is not responding the way they they think or in a timely manner, then they need somebody to follow up and somebody that they can talk to, whether it's a primary care doctor or a case manager, somebody who will help them navigate the system.
Okay, that's a great idea.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Uh, so we have Councilwoman Tapio, Councilman Jopinigo, Councilman Little Dog, and then Councilman Yellow Bird Steel.
I'll be brief, um, my comment, Sarah, is um I don't, well, maybe you have made some good strides, that's a good thing, but I'm looking at the day-to-day operations and the staff and the services that are going out to the people, not all the other accomplishments. I commend you if you got Medicare billing and all this and that. But the question I have is, have you ever brought a needs uh amount that you need um for improving the hospital to us to try to increase IHS's budget, the budget, the money that we get? Have you ever come to us and said, look, I need this or, you know, X amount of dollars? I I don't recall that ever happening. And the other thing I want to say is, I didn't, I didn't, let me finish. I didn't meant my words. I was up there last week, two days on Tuesday and Thursday, and I went down to the administration building because I know where your office is and the doors were locked. And one of the employees that went by, and then I had an appointment on Thursday and the nurse that I was there told me that you were going to be gone out of the office all week. So that's where I got my information. I did not make that up and I don't know if you were there, but that's what I was told by one of the staff. Thank you.
Yes, yes, no, I I I mean, yes, I was on leave, but I think making the comment that I'm on leave, I mean, anyone would say that I'm hardly ever on leave, so I I mean, that's like, I I don't know, that's just interesting. But um, as a federal employee, I cannot come to the tribe and and tell you um, I I cannot, I I cannot do what you're telling me to do.
Thank you, Dr. Jopinigo. Um okay, so we have Councilman Little Dog and then Councilman Yellow Bird Steel.
Thank you, um. No, I I just want to make a comment, um. You know, it's not us that are just bringing, bringing all these issues up. You know, these are people out there who come forth every day with concerns of um, you know, the treatment up at IHS and all these stories of um you know, being m- misdiagnosed or given the wrong medications or whatnot. Those are our people that are telling us these stories. But one thing I want to mention is unfortunately, it was our own people that voted to keep IHS here. You know, we we wanted to see better healthcare here for our people. And so last administration, we tried to, we put it out there for a vote to the people to get rid of IHS, to look at bringing in Avera or Sanford or uh another um um program that would come in and help us with our health issues, but due to the fact that our people are okay with status quo in IHS, we didn't move forward. And a lot of it had to do with our own members who work for IHS going out there and spreading these rumors that the tribe's going to run the hospital and we're gonna go in the red, misspend the money, whatever. But because of our our own, our own failures to move forward, we're stuck with IHS. The treaty says that the the federal government will provide healthcare. The treaty don't say IHS would administer the dollars. And everyone's saying, oh, if you get rid of IHS, you get rid of, you're 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 messing with the treaties, and that's not true. All the treaty states is that we'll get healthcare. IHS is just someone administering our dollars. So, you know, we have ourselves to blame too for not wanting better healthcare. Lot of our people out there, they 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 bring us these stories to, you know, about what what's going on up there. But at the same time, from the vote we saw last administration, they're okay, they're okay with status quo. So this is something that it's almost like we have to get used to. You just heard uh Dr. Jopinigo say, you know, they can't bring those um requests for additional dollars because she's a federal employee. And as much times we've been to DC, those of you that went to lobby for more dollars for healthcare, you know, we we turn around and we we get nothing. You know, when we six thirty-eight ambulance program, they gave us crumbs. They gave us crumbs to run that program. Then the minute we gave that program back to them, man, their budget increased big time. So I, i- it's kind of sad that you know, when it comes to healthcare, our people are continued to uh be treated like this by the federal government. But like I stated, you know, we we could have went out and did better. You take a good look at uh Oyate House up in Rapid City. They were shutting down um Susan, department by department. And they told us their budget was something like five hundred thousand in revenue a year. And when we six thirty-eighted it and moved ahead, that program, it 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 got better for our relatives in Rapid City. That's because we have a different party administering it. And this is just my own opinion. So we're we're stuck with IHS and something we have to deal with, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Dr. Jopinigo.
Um, this is Dr. Jopinigo. So um, when uh our service unit reassumed the ambulance program, our budget did not increase, at least from IHS. We're using our third-party revenue to supplement to supplement, um, the ambulance program, um, which is why we have, you know, continue to have the same challenges. Um, so our, our budget didn't increase. Um, and then I would just have to say, you know, for, um, the service unit and, you know, the great team that we have, our hard-working staff, um, that, you know, the tribe has the right to decide to six thirty eight, you know, under the self-determination. Um, but I would just remind people that there, you know, there, there isn't a need to, to say that we're providing substandard care in order to, uh, to six thirty eight. You know, if, if there, and, and of course, I'm sharing challenges that we have in different processes, and we're trying to work through those challenges, but ev- every day, um, there are great stories and people who, um, give compliments to our staff, you know, and, and of course, you and I are in the positions where oftentimes what we hear are the, um, the other side of the coin, the challenges. And that, that's why we're in these tough seats, because those are the challenging situations that, um, that we have to follow up and address to make sure the, the needs of the community are, are met. Um, and, and that's why, you know, uh, we're in these, these, um, tough positions because we are responsible to follow up on, on those issues. And, and when I get the feedback from you, I do follow up on, on those. I give feedback to the ED, I give feedback to the clinics. I mean, right now I'm contacting, um, you know, the Deputy CEO over Wambly to, to say, you know, what the issues are that we need to follow up on, and, and with the ambulance, you know, and, um, Councilwoman, uh, White Horse is contacting me about questions, um, I follow up with those departments. So I just want you to know that, that, um, that feedback is taken seriously and we follow up on it. But I don't wanna discount, um, all of the excellent work that is going on here at the service unit.
Thank you, Dr. Jumping Eagle. Just wanna, um, remind us that we have a motion and a second on the floor, and uh, fifth member, can you please keep it down back there? We still have Councilman Yellow Bird Steel, and then we have Councilwoman White Horse and Councilwoman Sears.
Thank you. I'm not gonna take up too much time, but we just got an email from a nurse at the hospital saying the morale is low. They don't like the working conditions. A lot of the nurses are leaving. You call us disrespectful, and we're telling you what we know, what we care about in healthcare to our people. And you, as the United States head person or treaty health for us, you tell your bosses to give back the hundred millions of acres of land in that treaty, or give us good healthcare. Thank you. Or we'll ask for someone who can do that for us.
Councilwoman White Horse and then Councilwoman Sears.
Thank you. I just wanted to make mention to Robin's question about the budgets and the needs. Um, the, IHS has a budget council, and, um, I was on part, on that for a while, but I didn't agree with how things were done. So, um, the vice chairman is now on the budget council. Um, what I didn't agree with is that we're always told that they can't lobby. They can't lobby. They can't ask for more funding, but whenever we went to, whenever I went to the meetings, we were told what to ask for. We weren't asked what our priorities were, or what our needs on, in our, on our reservation, where we were told what to ask for and how much, and I just didn't think that was right.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I don't think I'm on the budget committee, but I'll get with you afterwards to, to see who actually is on there. Um, I know they can fuse some things, so there are some things at the area level and the headquarters that they get things next, messed up and confused.
And our senators and congressmen.
Yep, yep. So it's, it's a very big entity for sure. Um, it's national, it's area-wide, there, there's a lot, but I'll get with you, Councilwoman, so we can figure that out. Um, we have Councilman Sears.
Yes, um.
Excuse me, Jac- Jacqui, excuse me, I'm interrupting you real quick, but here, if I could. I wanna call a point of order here. Uh, council, we got, um, people from IHS, and we've been talking for a long time about how our concern for IHS is very important, which it is. And so can we give the, uh, the, uh, presenters the respect of listening to them? Of what they have to say? Because by, by not listening to them, it looks like we don't wanna hear what they're saying, and I'm not saying that's what you guys are doing, but all I'm saying is let's give these guys the, these ladies and gentlemen, the rece- respect that you would also want when you were speaking. Thank you.
Thank you, Sergeant Arms. Uh, Councilman Sears?
Okay, thank you. Um, good afternoon, Dr. Jumping Eagle. Um, you know, I hear what rest of the council people are saying, and I've always supported, you know, your leadership and, and, and you taking over and helping with our IHS. But I also hear the, the complaints from our, our constituents out there, they're calling, and when we, they, they're saying all these concerns, and I said, we addressed them, you heard it on the radio. And they would tell us, there, you're not hearing the truth. You're just hearing what she has to say, and she's not telling you the truth, and, you know, so, so those are some of the things we need to clear up here. We need factual, uh, things, and we need to hear from, you probably need to sit down, just like what, um, some of the council people said. Sit down and have a visit with your departments. I think this is really key, because we're con- we're gonna continue to hear these concerns if it's not dealt with. And I did hear you say that, um, Robin asked, um, that you couldn't give us, uh, needs uh, from, as a federal department there? But have you, uh, given your superiors any kind of documentation of your needs? You know, at the I, local IHS here, because I think that we need to see that. We need to at least maybe get it from IA area office, if that's been done. Have you done that? So, you know, to let them know the shortages here?
Dr. Jumping Eagle?
Oh, sorry. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can.
Oh, okay, sorry, I was really talking on mute. Um, uh, apologies. Um, we submit, um, a budget proposal to, um, through my chain of command, um, with the, uh, projected deficit, and it also includes what our proposal is for, um, the revenue generation. How are we gonna, um, get out of that deficit? How are we gonna, um, you know, control costs and increase, um, revenue generation? So that is, um, something that we submit to the area office.
Do you give them a report on, uh, you coming to council and hearing all these concerns? Um, letting them know how the leadership here is not happy? Do you give that kind of a report?
I update them on the, um, yes. I take notes and then I, I give, um, feedback to, uh, my supervisors on, on the meeting.
So I think, you know, council, I think we do need to probably address that with Aberdeen area and the higher-ups, you know, to let them know that she did bring those forward, and we need to hear, um, what their decisions are on our concerns. We all, we, so I think we need to make a motion to that fact, you know, that we need to meet with them.
We can make that motion, but first I wanna wrote, run the motion to, uh, deny the report. We do still have a motion to deny in a second. So Madam Secretary, can you call that vote, please?
I have a, my hands up, vice.
Will that impact the motion to deny the report?
No, no, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I just wanna say good afternoon, Dr. Jumping Eagle. You don't just sit in here listening. Yeah, you know, we are gonna always get concerns that come from our constituents in reference to the care that they receive at the IHS. And, you know, I think that there's times I have called you directly, and you did answer your phone, you did, uh, look into the issues that I had with our constituents, you know, but the thing is, um, uh, kinda concerns me is the ambulance, uh, program that the tribe gave back to IHS. And, um, you know, I had a family last weekend that, um, sat in that emergency room for, I don't know how many hours. Uh, their family member was, uh, apparently, what they told me was, uh, she was diagnosed as, with a stroke. And they took for a long time just to get her out of, uh, IHS to, uh, an outside hospital. And they were very frustrated over it, and I was getting calls on it, so I'm kind of, um, glad you updated, updated us on the ambulance part of it. You know, and I hope that, um, we can kind of, uh, maybe, uh, try to, um, get the ambulance part of the hospital, you know, with more ambulance. And is, uh, have a plan, you said, to do that?
Right. I mean, we're always working to increase, um, the staffing and the number of, I mean, our goal would be to increase the number of ambulances. That's, um, so, so yes, but I would, I mean, if I could talk to you afterwards to find out more about that, that issue, um.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'll do that, because I really, um, I know that I've talked to you before about the emergency room being a separate contract from the IHS. And, um, you know, to me, it's just like, um, you know, somewhere down the road, we have to address that. You know, I, and I agree, you know, when you came into that position, you know, there was, uh, things that weren't run correctly there. You know, corrective actions were put in place. Um, I remember that. You know, our hospital really was, uh, went down. You know, and then we had this, uh, Dr. Weber case that was going on during that, you know, during that time. And you came on board afterwards. You know, so, you know, I just wanna thank you for all the, uh, hard work that you're trying to do. And, you know, I think that, um, you know, if the, if we're short in nursing, in the nursing department, we should, um, you know, I'm, 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 you know, you say you have a plan for that, so I'm hoping that that can be addressed, but all the other things behind it that you're saying that you put in place, um, I'm agreeable with the, uh, my colleague, Ms. Sears, you know, I think we need to address the higher-ups above you. You know, the area office, and even if we have to go to DC, you know, to address those issues. You know, because, you know, when you're trying down here to do what you can, and you're giving it to your higher-ups, you know, that's a challenge, a lot of challenges you're faced with. And so, you know, I believe in treaty healthcare, but you know what? That's our only healthcare that we have. You know, the only thing that the tribe gets is, you know, as an employee, is to use outside dental or vision. We don't have healthcare. We have to come to IHS to get our healthcare. You know, so I wanna say today that, you know, we're gonna always get concerns coming from our constituents. But I've always called you, and you've always answered my calls and, uh, tried to take care of those matters after hours, so I will share that with you. And, um, just gonna say that, you know, our job as legislators is to go to DC and fight for more funding. And however this, uh, formula, however this, uh, what Ms. White Horse was talking about, that's at a national level. You know, and I'm not agreeable if it's just to take care of, you know, at a national level, we should be worrying about our local level. You know, so I really wanna say that i- it, they make it sound like it's a part of it, but, you know, maybe it's not. But those are things we need to really, um, you know, look into. So, you know, I think our, that motion Mr. Ms. Sears is gonna make, you know, I think we need to do that. We need to go visit the higher-ups above you and address some of these concerns that we have. So, but I just wanna thank you, and one of the questions I had was, uh, I know way back during the corrective actions, uh, when that all happened, we asked for a tribal advocate, la- uh, uh, advocate between the tribe and the IHS, and I know today you have that in place today. But one of the things, uh, I want to, I guess, hear is what is the role of your patient advocate? And the tribal advocate, the, the, could you give me the two are, you know, explain what they do?
Right. Um, so our hospital liaison is the tribal, um, they're the tribal liaison, and that is Corey Blackfeather. Um, and so he's the point of contact as the tribal liaison, um, with the tribe, uh, tribal leadership, the tribal programs and IHS. And then the patient advocate, um, is, uh, Keith, uh, Kenneth Keith, uh, but he goes by Bart. Um, and, and also Leo Whorland Horse over at, um, Kyle, there's a patient advocate. And so they help with, um, you know, that if there's a patient complaint or a patient grievance, they may try to help, um, resolve the situation, just, uh, you know, as it's happening. Um, but if somebody wants to submit a grievance or a complaint, then they'll help them with that process. And they also help run the, uh, grievance committee and then help to follow up on the corrective actions. Um, that's the patient advocate. Sometimes the, um, the hospital liaison or the tribal liaison, if the patient advocate's out, they may also assist with the patient advocate duty as well.
And I think the reason why we put that, uh, tribal, uh, liaison, the advocate in place was just because as tribal council, we get all these concerns that come from our constituents. And we wanted that person or that position to try to handle a lot of the things that were coming directly to us as council. So I'm glad you brought those two position, I'm glad that you told us what each one does. And I'm hoping our people are oyate out there listening, because, you know, they're asking, what do they do? Um, and I think that, um, this is where they can take those concerns to those advocate, and hopefully they can, uh, help take care of that. I remember former president, you know, Teresa Tubels was in that patient advocate position. And I've come to the hospital one time, and she was always in the, um, lobby area, talking to patients, making sure, did you eat? A lot of them are diabetics, they have to eat, but they sit there, wait for their appointment, so she was kinda doing a lot of that there. And so, you know, I think that we need to try to, uh, utilize them more, and I'm glad that your, uh, our people are oyate are listening, that they can utilize them for those reasons. You know, that's what, you know, their job is, uh, in, entail to do. And, um, as council, we, we, we advocated for that position, and we got it through IHS, so we need to, um, say that, um, and I know that we get a lot of emails from this, Mr. Blackfeather, giving us updates, but I just wanted to, you know, see, uh, hear exactly what they were doing, so our people could hear it, our oyate could hear it. But I just wanna thank you, uh, for that, and, um, just hope that we can get something done so, uh, we don't have the concerns, um, with getting our patients out in a timely manner, uh, with the ER. Thank you, Dr. Eagle.
And one other comment, um, thank you for that, and, uh, maybe we'll do a, another PSA about the patient advocates and the hospital liaison as well. Um, one other comment about the ER, the ER contract, um, we have a weekly ER contract meeting, um, and we have the contract officer representative on there. And so we give, uh, feedback back to the contract company and to the contract officer representative. And so during that meeting, um, I also give them direct feedback that's coming from the tribal council and from the patients and from grievances. So, um, so I use that time as well to give them feedback and the need for, uh, you know, if it's customer service improvements or quality issues that are coming up, um, I give them that direct feedback during those meetings. And then we also, with any contract, um, there's contract evaluation. Um, although this is the area contract, um, there's feedback given on the contract evaluations as well, um, but this one would be through area.
Thank you, Dr. Jumping Eagle, and thank you, Council, for all your comments. Um, fifth member was even woke up back there after he's being distracted and tried to get on and ask a question, so, um, do appreciate all the information, Dr. Jumping Eagle, and all the questions from council. I just wanna remind us- I just want to remind us too that um last month, we motioned to set up a meeting specifically to talk about IHS and and healthcare. And I don't think that's been set up yet, um but hopefully that gets set up soon and we can have a a good, long conversation about that. So um with that, I'm gonna ask Secretary to run the vote on the motion to deny the IHS report. Thank you.
And um for the record, this is to also send the denial of report to the Aberdeen area office with the uh report attached to it. Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Howard Rooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Wendell Youngman Junior?
Yes.
Anna Halverson? No. James Cross?
Yes.
Ella Giancarlo? George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Can you restate the motion, please?
Motion made by Austin Watkins or seconded by Robin Tapio to
Wanted to hear the wording.
Okay.
Okay, to deny the report.
The IHS report.
And
And to send the denial of report to Aberdeen area.
Okay, yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Yeah.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Don Ray Goldsberg?
Yes.
John Steele Senior? Garfield Little Dog?
Yep.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Council that passes fifteen yes and two no. Councilwoman Haverson, did you have a question or were you? Okay, all right, um Councilwoman Sears, did you have another motion to make?
Yes, um I wanted to make a motion that um HHS meet on this issue. And get all the um the issues that we discussed in a document. And have our attorney in DC set up a meeting with our delegates and the officials up and uh above on IHS to um address these issues. Because we need to find out how far these issues are are being sent up. And if they're already even addressing them up there from our local service unit.
So the motion by Councilwoman Sears, the second by Councilwoman Tapio, Councilwoman Tapio, you have a comment?
Yeah, just um Jackie, perhaps we could do a addendum in there too, where we could have them come here and meet with us. As I recall, Mr. Weston, Scott Weston was president. We had him um come from Aberdeen and Rockville, Maryland, they sent somebody, so.
I'll accept that, Robin, from Aberdeen also.
Right, so that they come here for a strategic planning meeting. Thank you.
So with the amendments to have them come here, we still have the motion and the second on the floor, any questions or comments? Hearing or seeing none, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Howard Rooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Wendell Youngman Junior? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Uh.
Jackie Sears?
Oh huh.
Don Ray Goldsberg?
Yes.
John Steele Senior? Garfield Little Dog?
Yep.
Craig Dillon?
Yes.
Council that passes eighteen unanimous, thank you, Councilwoman. Next item is the Oyate Health Center report, Councilwoman Halverson?
I think um I was gonna give a report on the Oyate Health Center. Um as a Minne Lusaha Committee member, we had our first board meeting in December. Our second in January. Our last meeting for February was set aside to discuss the three Rapid City programs with members of the HHS Committee and Oyate Health and Minne Lusaha Advisory Board. Um in January, we had a HHS meeting in Rapid City with the three programs as well as an elder committee. Um we had questions and concerns of the possible transition of those three programs to go under Oyate Health. As HHS Committee, this has been an ongoing discussion of the feasibility of moving these three programs under the Oyate Health Center. There are a lot of clarifications that will be discussed at the next HHS Committee meeting. A lot of the actions we have for discussion are time sensitive. Special after the HHS Committee. As a tribe, we need to greatly take into consideration that we as Oglala Lakotas are not the only stakeholders. We also have two other tribes who are also involved, the Rosebud Tribe and the Cheyenne River Tribe. Chairman Scott Herman and Chairman Brian LeBeau and Council from each of these tribes also attend the meetings. We also have community, community advisory board members who live in Rapid City from our tribe, Rosebud and Cheyenne. We were told that the tribe will lose almost five hundred thousand in IDC funds, which was concerning for the tribe. But as a tribe, we need to look at both revenue and expenses that the tribe has on these three programs in Rapid City. The grand opening for Oyate Health was on February twenty fifth. The services at Oyate Health started on February sixth. We have a lot of Oglala Lakota tribal members from Rapid City who receive healthcare from Oyate Health. We also have tribal members that drive up to Oyate Health to receive healthcare. Not only that, we also have the other two tribal um tribal memberships who utilize the services of Oyate Healthcare. Sonia and I, so um Chairwoman Sonia and I have a lot, a list of talking points that we will be presenting at the HHS Committee. Which will lay out costs that OST might otherwise have to incur if it continues to be the responsibility of the Rapid City programs. Above all, we need to keep our health services to the people first and foremost in mind. We all deserve good healthcare, whether we live on reservation or off reservation. I look forward to Sonia and I meeting with the HHS Committee for a more extensive report on the Oyate Health Center and the transition of the three programs. Um I guess that's all I have to say on that. If Sonia has anything to add, that would be great. Thank you.
Thank you for your update on your participation in the uh Health Board. Uh we do have Jerelyn Church's report, I believe some of it was, it was emailed, it was also printed. Um so that's a report that will will I don't believe Jerelyn is on.
No, um just a a comment vice.
Is it specifically on Jerelyn Church's report?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just gonna make a motion to approve her report, since we did get it and I, you know, it was emailed and we did read it, I read it.
Okay, so we have
Motion to approve it and uh like I mentioned yesterday to uh the Council and to Ryan, that uh we'll be bringing that to the HHS Committee first. With uh what Ms. Halverson talked about, so I won't go into anything on that. But just a motion to approve the Oyate Health Center report.
Okay, we have a motion.
I had my hand up.
I see you, Councilwoman, I'm just um poking us back on the Jerelyn Church report, um so that we're focused on that. So go ahead, Councilwoman Sears.
Well, I just had a a question for um Anna, you know, when she uh gave that report on the meeting with the um Oyate Health, the their meeting they have, the advisory meeting. Um you have, you guys do have the uh community advisory that also um serve on there from the community. Do you know if they're informing the community of this also? Because I keep getting, you know, feedback from the community saying, are they coming out to talk to us about this? Do we have a say, you know, things like that? So I just want to ensure that our people up there, because we don't live up there, you know, but we're making decisions. So at least to inform them of what's going on, what we're uh going to possibly do. So is that being happen, happening, Anna?
Um we do have Rapid City residents that are tribal membership on that advisory board. And I believe in the future, they have set up more conversations and more communication with the elderly committee from Rapid City as well as planned community um communication efforts um to deal with this. So I believe they set up a one year, um once a year meeting with the community members up there.
Thank you, Anna.
Thank you, Councilwoman Sears, so we have a motion by Councilwoman um Little Hawk Weston, a second by Councilwoman Tapio to approve, did you have a comment or no, you didn't want a second? Okay, so we have uh Councilwoman Tapio and then Councilwoman Yellowbird Steel.
Well, if someone's gonna get a second, I I'm not gonna second it, but I did um just have some concerns and maybe Anna and Sonia could address some. I did get some calls from some of our membership in Rapid City regarding outstanding bills that they're receiving in the mail, that um apparently Oyate should have taken care of. And I guess while we're on the subject, it's another um issue for IHS too, something that we need to look into. So that's all I have, you know, I just wanted wanted them to look into the people getting bill billed for services that, when they were referred out at both hospitals, IHS and Oyate. Thank you.
Got you, and I don't know if our council reps have the answer to that. I think Jerelyn Church should be on or someone from Oyate Health, but they can take it back for sure, but I don't think they have the answer for that. I would rather hear that from Jerelyn Church.
Yeah, I think we could take, uh that could be addressed. Uh Robin, I think um I think in the past, she did tell us that uh people that did have those concerns that they can um address it with their office. Because a lot of them were based when before they were uh six thirty eight, a lot of the bills were still under IHS. And then when they took over, those bills were still there. So I think that those could be addressed with Jerelyn, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you, I wish Ms. Church was on to answer these. But unfortunately, she's not. So we have Councilman Yellowbird Steel and then Councilman Lunderman?
Thank you, uh, Mr. President, what I want to address, and I'm doing it at this time because I don't see it on our agenda, is what is called Tribal Chairman's Health Board in Rapid City. That Jerelyn Church is the director, CEO, or whatever of, is separate from the Oyate Health Center here. This is the old Susan giving healthcare and uh I don't know too much about it, but it looks good. But uh on the Tribal Chairman's Health Board are a lot of monies being spent for research of Indian health. They never come to the reservation for any kind of services or they never bring us anything. But they take a lot of healthcare monies on very high-priced, well-paid people to do research. Now, this is all well and good if it's done with other than our healthcare monies. These healthcare monies are for the people's health, not to do research. It might affect us positively in the future, but it's not doing anything for us right now. Uh people's healthcare, and so we need to do something about these research offices, I don't know how many different items are being researched in our healthcare, but it's taking a lot of money. And I think it should be coming directly to people's healthcare. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, I did sit on the tribe's Research Review Board before I was elected in office. Uh so the Oglala Sioux Tribe does have a Research Review Board, you're talking about Great Plains, I understand the difference. But we do have a Research Review Board that those should be going through, especially if they're they're doing the research here. They also are using our numbers to get those monies for those research projects for sure. But if they are doing the research with our people, they should be coming through our OST RRB, so. Which is ordinance, an ordinance for that, for people to come through that board if they're doing research here. But you're right, our numbers are being used to get money for research.
Not only are numbers being used, our monies are being used for these research offices.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman Lunderman?
Thank you, Madam Chair, yes, I just had a community member say, you know, wish the council to give, wish the council would give the tribal members some kind of health card. Because a lot of members live off the reservation and so they won't be getting these big bills. Um one of them ran into a issue where last week she had to come all the way back to Pine Ridge. And she lives in Sioux Falls, and when she did come, they had to sit there for thirteen hours.
Thank you, Councilman Lunderman. So we have a motion to approve, still on the floor. We have a second, second by Councilwoman Halverson. Seeing or hearing no other discussion, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
No.
Cora Whitehorse?
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
No.
Howard Rooks?
No.
Austin Watkins Senior? Wendell Youngman Junior? Anna Halverson?
Yes.
James Cross?
No.
George Dreamer Junior? Robin Tapio?
No.
Tyler Lunderman?
No.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston?
Huh.
Jackie Sears?
Yeah.
Don Ray Goldsberg?
No.
John Steele Senior? Garfield Little Dog? Craig Dillon?
Nope.
Council, that fails to yes and fifteen no. The motion to approve, so do we have any other motions on this report? Hearing no other motions? We will move on. Moving on to the BIA Pine Ridge Agency Report, we did not get a written report. Uh Superintendent DeVille, I believe, is on, but she said the report won't be done until Monday. So would you guys like to hear from Superintendent DeVille?
Motion table.
We had a motion to table by Councilman Little Dog?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Tapio and Councilman Hawkins. That's a non-debatable motion, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
I would love to give an oral report.
Unfortunately, it was tabled, your report was tabled, uh Superintendent DeVille, and I did ask him if they wanted to hear from you.
Wesley Hawkins Senior?
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse?
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior?
Yes.
Howard Rooks?
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior? Wendell Youngman Junior? Anna Halverson? No. James Cross?
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior?
Yes.
Robin Tapio?
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman?
Yes.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Yeah.
Jackie Sears.
Yeah.
Don Ray Ghost Bear.
Yes.
John Steele Senior. Garfield Little Dog.
Yeah.
Craig Dillon. Craig Dillon.
Council that passes twelve yes, five no, motion to table. Moving on to the nursing home, I believe there was a report in the packet, correct?
But she's not on, I don't think. Well, Tiffany.
Any questions or comments, counsel, on the nursing home report? Yep, Councilman Jumping Eagle.
You know, I think we tabled this one too. She, I know she sends written reports, but I know it'd be good to hear a report in person, even if it's just on committee.
Okay.
So I'll motion to table this one too.
Motion to table by Councilman Jumping Eagle, second by Councilman Ghost Bear and Councilman Hawkins. Non-debatable motion. Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins Senior. Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Brooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio. Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Huh.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Don Ray Ghost Bear.
Yes.
John Steele Senior. Garfield Little Dog. Craig Dillon. Robin, would you like to vote?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Yes, Councilman.
Can I give a brief report on the nursing home?
So this table, we motioned to table the report seventeen yes. Since you said please, they said three minutes.
Three minutes. Tribal Council. We here are having problems with our elderly getting to nursing homes. And so South Dakota wouldn't work with us. But Nebraska did. That's why that nursing home is located in our land in Nebraska. Nebraska Social Services stepped up to the plate to help us. Nebraska Governor. And we went to Medicaid. Medicaid said Pine Ridge is mainly in the state called South Dakota. But we're not going to recognize that. We will take Pine Ridge residents into Nebraska under Medicare. And so only our, our people can use the nursing home. Now, in Nebraska, nursing home in Gordon, Rushville, anywhere, Rapid City, Medicaid, Medicare will only pay two hundred dollars a day for that person. But there was a Rosebud tribal member on Medicare and they got us a waiver that for people in our nursing home, if the bill runs two thousand a day, three thousand a day, Medicare will pay that. There's no ceiling for our tribal members in our nursing home. And it does have a board. I don't know who sits on that board. Uh, one time, before the nursing home was used, one of the white clay, I don't know, one of our people that lives in white clay under the, in the alleys got into the nursing home and was locked up in there overnight. And they don't have enough law and order, public safety or whatever to watch our nursing home. So we gotta do that ourselves. They probably have a security. But we are different. With our nursing home, we're unique. With our relationship with the state of Nebraska and with Medicare and the operation of our own elderly center. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Beat the three minutes. Thank you for that update, though. Appreciate it. Moving on to the Ogalsu Tribe Human Resource Department, Chief of Staff Lafferty, are you on?
Chief of Staff, Human Resources.
Oh, I'm sorry, Human Resources, Michelle. My apologies. Anybody have any?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Whitehorse, second by Councilman Dillon, I believe.
Yeah.
To approve the HR report. Hearing or seeing no questions or comment, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote?
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
No.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Brooks. Austin Watkins Senior. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio. Tyler Londonman. Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Don Ray Ghost Bear. John Steele Senior. Garfield Little Dog. Craig Dillon.
Counsel that passes fourteen yes, three not voting. Now moving on to Ogalsu Tribe Chief of Staff, Mr. Lafferty. Do we have a motion to approve?
Great.
He's on.
Okay, floors are.
Hey, good afternoon, everybody. I'm sitting here in Grants Committee. So if you have any questions, I handed my report out to everybody there yesterday and I emailed Stacy a copy of it for those that weren't there to receive a hard copy, but I'm here to answer any questions. I know earlier Councilman Ghost Bear brought up the programs in the red, but that's something we're working on addressing. If you look back through the memos, I requested that the program set up a meeting with their accountants to be concluded by the end of this quarter, which would be March thirty first, to reconcile their accounts. That way we can get a good picture of which programs are in the red and figure out what's going on, why they're so far in the red or what's going, like along those lines. So, yeah, I'm here for, any questions you guys have?
Any questions, counsel? Motion to approve by Councilman Youngman, second by Councilman Dreamer. Hearing or seeing no questions or comments, Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
No, but yes.
Howard Brooks.
Yes.
Austin Watkins Senior. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson. James Cross.
Yes.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Huh.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Don Ray Ghost Bear.
Yes.
John Steele Senior. Garfield Little Dog.
No.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
That passes fifteen yes and one not voting. Thank you, Chief of Staff. The next is Ogalsu Tribe Veterans Committee. There's no reports.
Chair, do they even have a committee yet?
I don't know. That's a good question.
Oh, it's a no vote.
Pardon me, Councilman.
Yeah, there was one vote. Fifteen yes, one no, one.
Okay, my bad. The last vote was fifteen yes, one no and one not voting.
Motion to adjourn.
Well, we still have one more item, sir. The Ogalsu Tribe Veterans Committee.
There's nobody here.
We want a motion to table or take action or to table? Motion table by Council. Yep, motion table by Councilman Watkins. We have a second. Second by Councilwoman Tapio, Councilman Ghost Bear and Councilman Hawkins. Not a second? Are you a second, though, Councilman Ghost Bear?
After my comment.
There's no comment on tabling. Are you a second? Okay, so not seconded by Councilman Ghost Bear, but seconded by Councilman Tapio and Councilman Hawkins. So it's a non-debatable motion to table. Madam Secretary, can you call the vote, please?
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Brooks.
Hoka.
Austin Watkins Senior. Wendell Youngman Junior.
Yes.
Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross.
No.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Huh.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Don Ray Ghost Bear. John Steele Senior. Garfield Little Dog.
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Craig Dillon.
Yes.
Counsel that passes fourteen yes, two no and one not voting. Councilman Little Dog.
Yeah, before, before we leave, counsel, I got a lady online who wants to address the council, but if we could do it off record. And I'd really appreciate if we give her some time because it's, she really needs support from the tribe here if we can give her a few minutes.
So do you want a motion to go into executive?
Executive, yeah.
So we have a motion to go into executive. Do we have a second? Second by Councilman Youngman. Madam Secretary, can you call the votes go into executive, please?
Wesley Hawkins Senior.
Oh.
Cora Whitehorse.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Howard Brooks. Austin Watkins Senior. Wendell Youngman Junior. Anna Halverson.
Yes.
James Cross. George Dreamer Junior. Robin Tapio.
Yes.
Tyler Londonman.
Yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston.
Huh.
Jackie Sears.
Uh huh.
Don Ray Ghost Bear. John Steele Senior.
Yes.
Garfield Little Dog.
Yes.
Craig Dillon.
Counsel, that's nineteen unanimous. We will be in executive starting at one fifty nine PM. We'll give five to ten minutes to clear the room and the Zoom and we will be in executive. Thank you.